Meeting, the zoning commission meeting to order. And I'm going to turn it over to the goal for introductions. Thank you. Trina White is with us in the senior center today. So she is our chair pro tem. We have Mike Larson and Jack King on the Zoom platform who are joining us. We do have a quorum, so the city zoning commission is in session and has a public hearing. In the room with me today is Monica Blecker, our planning division manager, and she's running and managing our Zoom meeting. We also have Tammy Dynas, who is our planning clerk, and she'll be taking the public comments by phone and the minutes of today's meeting. The public comment phone is 237-6120. We also have Jeanette Veig, who's helping check people in if they're attending in person. We also have members of our steering committee on the Zoom meeting. So welcome everyone to the city zoning commission final public hearing. Today we'll cover the map and administrative procedures.
So we, at this time, will call for any public comment?
On things not on the agenda.
If it's not on the agenda and there's a public comment. This is a public comment period, so we will see if there's any public comments from the audience.
Everything you're talking about, John, where?
Today's meeting materials are up at the table.
Everything's on every time.
Yes, is at the table.
No call-ins at this time, so we will move on to reading the rules for the procedure. Do we need to do that?
Well, I'll just give a basic overview. Staff will make a presentation. Then the zoning commission members will ask questions of staff. Then the chair will open the public meeting for public comment for those who are in the room who would like to make public comment, and then open it to anyone on the Zoom call who'd like to make public comment. And then to those who want to call in at 237-6120 after the presentation is completed. So if there's no other things?
We will have the staff go ahead with the presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. And I will share my screen and get a slideshow going. So everyone can see my screen. So today we're covering the zoning map update and administrative procedures. This is really where the new zoning code rubber meets the road, so to speak. So because we changed a lot of zone districts, we had to update the map. And we've updated our administrative procedures based on our growth policy goals and the steering committee guiding principles that were set down in January of 2018. So just to jump right in, to view the map, it's a color-coded map, and so you'll need to know the legend. On the right side of the screen is the new legend for the new zone districts, and you can see that that's a shorter list. And on the left side of the screen is the existing zone map legend. It's a much longer list. So we've consolidated, and we've better described some of our new zones to fit with the character of those neighborhoods and corridors. So that's the new legend.
Do you have that legend? I don't see that in here. Is that over there? Or did I?
There might be one left, but I can email you that legend.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Sure. So our existing zone districts, as we started to update this map with our consultant as our zone districts were being finalized, had to develop a method of moving zoning districts to an equivalent zoning district in the new code. So for example, most newer residential 9600 zones ended up as a neighborhood three or suburban neighborhood residential zone on the map. Not all of our 96 zones went to this zone district, only where that character of that neighborhood matched with the new zone district of N3. The district update also to reflect actual use and development to primarily reduce nonconformities. So for example, some of the more well-known neighborhood service or commercial businesses like the Polly Food Basket, or the Harper Madison, or Canona Laundry, all exist right now in residential zone districts. So we applied a zone district to those properties that reflects the actual use and development and fits and will be compatible with those neighborhoods. So another example is we have some neighborhoods with lots of duplexes that are in residential 9600 zoning, which is a single-family-only zone district. So we updated those parcels to either an N1 or an N2, both neighborhood zones that allow single or two-family dwellings. Where we have four-unit buildings in neighborhoods, the old apartment-style buildings, we updated those to the NX1 or mixed residential 1, which allows one-to-four-family apartments. The community commercial zone, we broke up into three districts, primarily the corridor mixed-use 1 or 2, and then the CX or heavy commercial. And this depended on the use and development of that parcel or the predominant use in that area of zoning for community commercial. The highway commercial zone primarily updated to the heavy commercial zone or CX zone, but sometimes it went to a corridor mixed-use 2 zone, again depending on the actual use of the property. The entryway zone districts updated to the heavy commercial, or it could be the industrial, light industrial, corridor mixed 1 or 2, or even the neighborhood mixed use depending on the entryway zone district where it was located. So we also followed some good planning practices when we were updating the map to make sure we were changing zone districts at the rear property lines or at the alley property lines whenever we could. And we wanted to match zoning districts across the street from one another so that they didn't have kind of this disjointed feeling to the street. Corner parcels could have more intense uses to those mid-block, as opposed to the mid-block lots. So residential zoning right now will equate to neighborhood zoning in the new code and, of course, continue to reduce nonconformities wherever possible. So here's an overview of our existing map. Very busy, lots of color. People look at it and see different kinds of shapes in there. But the new zone map is less colors because we have less zone districts, but we feel that it's more precise than the existing zone map. I'm going to stop sharing this and pull up one of the portable document file maps so we can zoom in and see the detail on that map as an example. Okay, so we have lots of white space because we have unzoned property outside the city. So the zone map shows, right now, it's showing a letter designation for parcels and a color. So you can see the A designation is agriculture. The city limits line is in a dark green, so you know when you've entered the city. I'm going to zoom out a little. So the planned unit developments are staying as planned unit developments. You can see many of those areas that are currently zoned residential 9600 and have a yellow color designation on the existing map will be N3 zoning and also keeping the same yellow color designation on the map. You'll see some new colors on the map. The P3 here is for the St. John's Lutheran Ministries campus. So that's a public campus development for civic institutions right here. The P2 designation on the map is for schools and churches and other public institutions that are not a campus. They're just one or two buildings. The P1 designation on the map is a public 1, and that's for open space and recreation spaces. So we give more predictability to our public zoning by these three gradations. Then down along Grand, you'll start to see more colors here, and those are the corridor mixed-use 2 designations, corridor mixed-use 1. The neighborhood office is the light blue. The mixed residential 2 is kind of a pale orange. The mixed residential 1 is a darker green. So wherever we have planned unit developments, those are staying planned unit developments, and that will show up as a PUD or PD designation on the map. So that's what the map will look like. Lot less variation in color, but it makes more sense and is more predictable, we believe, based on the zoning update. Of course, I encourage everyone to look at these maps. They will be online as PDFs. They are part and embedded in the staff report for today's meeting on our agenda site for the city zoning commission. So you can zoom in and out. You can locate parcels, check the zoning. If you see something that doesn't look right, let us know, and we can check existing to propose to make sure we got that right.
How do you want us to notify?
By email is the best way. Okay, so we're going to jump back to the presentation. So here's a few more slides showing different sections of the map. So here, and it looks very gray at this perspective because it's showing all the property lines as well, but this is Main Street. So you can see there's some different zonings along Main Street depending on those uses of property and where it made sense. This is the southwest or south-central piece of the map. We've broken it up into six sections for easier viewing. And then here is a section of central Terry. So you can see here is the senior high school, Pioneer Park, the apartments on Lordwith, the zoning along Grand Avenue goes from the neighborhood office to neighborhood mixed use to corridor mixed use, and then on up the intensity scale to the corridor mixed use 2. Then we have the new apartments behind West Park Plaza. Those are the NX3 zone district. And then you'll start seeing some of those different green colors mixed into neighborhoods to indicate where those churches and schools and fire stations, places like that. And then, of course, the public 1 for the parks. So that covers the map. It was a lot to take in, but we've covered all of those zone districts. So I encourage everyone to check those maps, look at them online. If there's still errors that you find, let us know. We still have the ability to update that map as we move along. I'm sure we will miss things. I'm sure in the first year after this is adopted, we will continue to find little errors throughout, and we will make those corrections by kind of a housekeeping ordinance with the city council and the county commissioners. So the next part, and this is an important part for many people who participate in the administration of our zoning through zone change applications or variances or special reviews. So the current code has all these different procedures kind of sprinkled throughout the code. So sign permitting procedures are in one section of sign, and zoning compliance is in another section, and fences has its own procedure. So we pulled all those procedures into one section. Everything that is, that's just ministerial, that staff does every day, from building permit review to fences and signs and temporary uses, to all the way up to zone changes and planned neighborhood developments, they're all in this one section, including appeals of administrative decisions and what processes are available for that. Because we liked using charts and tables, we used lots of charts and tables in this new code section, 271600. So you'll see a flow chart for each procedure in the document. So it shows you what happens at which point and what happens at the end. And then there's post-approval actions, some that are required of the staff and administration, and some required of the applicants. So again, charts. Here's a nice chart of what type of application it is, or permit it is, or code administration it is, and what are the pieces and parts that are either optional or required for those types of applications, along with the specific code section to go to for that application type. So I'm going to just focus on one, which was important to many of our neighborhood task forces, and that's the special review procedures. The current special review is described in our code as an allowed use. The new code describes a special review use as an exception to the rules of that zone district, not as an allowed use. So the applicant has a heavier burden to prove that their project will fit in with that location and that existing neighborhood. And there are more criteria that have to be evaluated and met to get a special review approval. So pre-application neighborhood meetings are going to be required for special review uses. Currently, they're only required for zone changes, but now they're going to be required for special review uses. It has to show complete consistency with the growth policy, that it does not endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare, that complies with all of our site development requirements for landscaping, parking, signage, and building specifications, types of conditions that can be imposed. There's a longer and more detailed list in the new procedures that includes signs, hours of operations, limits on noise, timeframe for development, and buffering of adjacent properties. It also now has an expiration date. If you don't act on your special review approval within one year, that approval lapses. And if you stop the special review use on that piece of property for more than six months, it also expires. So this is in keeping with what we heard from the neighborhood task forces and from the city council about special review uses. So that's where we're going on this particular type of application. We've also expanded the notification area for zone changes and for neighborhood meetings for special reviews when that piece of property is close to the city limits. So where you have some county land that may be less dense than city property, you have to have a wider notification area so more people know about it directly through mail. We'll still keep the posting of the property and the legal advertising as required by state law. But there are more specific procedures about how to appeal a decision in this code than the current code, and we think this will be overall better to guide people of, I got a notice about such and such, what does that mean? We can send you a, you know, a flow chart and a procedures that'll be very understandable, and you don't have to read 24 pages to figure it out. So I'm ready to answer the zoning commission's questions, if you have any. Here's an outline of where we're at tomorrow. The county zoning commission will have their final meeting on the map and procedures. Then the county zoning commission will have their final discussion and make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners on October 12th. The county commissioners will take up that recommendation on November 10th. The city zoning commission will have a special session on October 14th to discuss all of the text amendments and the map update and make their recommendation to city council. That is, the city council is currently scheduled to hear that starting on November 9th at first reading.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions from our zoning committee?
Mike, do you have any questions?
I don't really have a question as much as I just wanted to comment on the special use section. I greatly appreciate the, I call it simplification, clarification of that process and definition around that, specificity in terms of what can be required, et cetera. I think that would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything from Jack, maybe?
Jack, do you have anything for us?
Frank, I certainly agree with Mike. It's very clear. I think that we're making great strides forward on a lot of different fronts. And I know that the board will comment on it.
Thank you, Jack. Trina, do you have anything?
My only question would be the notification area. It used to be like 300 feet, right?
Correct.
So now it will go to, where's that at in there?
Okay, it depends on the location of the property.
Okay, gotcha.
So if you're within a certain distance of city limits, your notification area is a little bit bigger than 300 feet. All of the alcohol casino-related special reviews have a minimum 600-foot notification area for mailing. So you can find those pretty easily if you just jump to those sections in there, and it primarily focuses on special reviews and zone changes, not so much variances, since those are very property-specific.
Okay. So then, we have any questions from those in the audience here?
Or Tessa?
Or, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman White. Staff, Blaine Poplar, 5403 King Avenue West. Kind of just an overall question about what we're doing here tonight. So we've talked about, you know, all these new zoning categories that are replacing the previous ones, and, you know, stated that there's going to be a little heavier burden to the applicant for special reviews, more requirements to have to be met, larger neighborhood meetings, and, you know, and comply with the growth policy, which we've been trying to do, is comply with the growth policy. I think what I've heard here tonight and throughout most of these hearings is talking about the use requirements according to the zoning. What can you do in this zoning? What can you do in that zoning as far as use goes? And I've mentioned this at prior meetings, but then we're also incorporating the form, would be correct to say the form-based zoning. That's where you're going to mandate the front of the building has to have so many windows and doors and built up to the property line. Would that be form-based?
Right. Some of the new districts have some basic form requirements for buildings as opposed to minimum setbacks.
Right. And so also then, it was briefly mentioned, the parking is a part of the process of approving a use in an area. And so the parking requirement, I mean, always we've had minimum number of parking spaces, but now we're going to be required to park in a commercial area beside and to the rear of the building. Am I correct on that?
In those form districts, yes.
Okay, so are the form districts going to include these commercial zonings?
The corridor mixed-use 1 and 2, and the neighborhood mixed-use and neighborhood office zones, those four districts are primarily form, they have those form requirements. The heavy commercial, the light industrial, heavy industrial, the central business district are not going to have those same requirements.
Sure. But a retail center, say, on Central Avenue would have to comply with that parking configuration? Is the question?
If it's zone corridor mixed-use 1 or 2, yeah.
Would that be the typical zoning for that enterprise?
A lot of it is, but there is also some other zoning in there on Central Avenue. So it's very, as all zoning, it's site-specific.
I understand. So are you going to have a separate public hearing on how the form-based requirements blend into the use requirements? Are we just going to read that in the new zoning manual?
I mean, how the form, each district has a chart and some illustrations that go together. So that's, you know, it indicates on those illustrations where parking can be. So hopefully that will make it clear for each zone district.
That's all I wanted to say tonight. Thank you.
I just would have a comment. It feels like there may be a lot of neighborhood meetings. Do you anticipate that? I'm kind of a little worried about the work on the staff and notifies and...
Actually, we put that burden on the applicant.
Okay.
Pre-application neighborhood meetings are the work of the applicant. We provide the mailing labels and what the notice has to say, but the applicant conducts the neighborhood meeting. It's their chance to meet with the neighbors outside of a public hearing process to hear what their thoughts and comments and concerns might be. So if they need to modify their application or address those specifically, they can do that. they can do that before they make their application formal to the planning division. We found that that has been helpful in many places.
That was my only comment. I thought it could be burdensome. So any other questions? We will now, do you have any public comments from those on call? I would just remind those, if the number is 2376120, you can call in with comments, testimony questions or the recall tag.
And anybody on Zoom also?
Anybody on Zoom at this point?
Okay, it looks like we have a question from Woody Woods.
Okay, go ahead.
We talked about the map and changes to it with the new designation. And you did mention that when people find out that they can get ahold of you and there's a time period for corrections. Are we setting a hard deadline at a year or are we going to go 18 months? Because there's a lot of people out there, quite honestly, that, you know, will find out about this later and they may, we may have an error and it needs to be corrected. So is there actually going to be a set time period?
We haven't discussed that as a set time period yet. That may be something that we want to think about a little bit. Obviously, we're going to have archives of the current zoning map before it changes, when this new zoning map is adopted, the updated map. So we will be able to go backwards and check if someone believes that an error has been made. But, you know, I'm finding errors that were, happened on the map from 1986. So I mean, there's no time limit on correcting the map if something didn't get updated.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to know in case, you know, people are going to ask and you give them that response, I think that would be fine.
Okay.
Do we have any more questions on Zoom or from the public calling? Again, that number's 2376120.
Okay, so I, there is no other questions on Zoom, I don't think. We haven't had, the phone has not run. So I guess it's a wrap.
That was quite good. Thank you. We adjourned this, can adjourn this meeting then.
Okay. Thank you all for attending. Listen in on October 14th when the city zoning commission will have their special meeting on their findings and recommendations to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.